And Jenny, would you take the role?
Mr. Bohan?
Here.
Mr. Conrady?
Here.
Dr. Sitwala?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Dr. Hulman?
Here.
Ms. Chaney?
Here.
Mr. Yekitis?
Here.
And I would like to call on Mr. Mike Warren to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We would love, we'd love it just to have. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And do we have, we'll start with the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 11th, 2019?
So moved.
Thank you, a second. Second, thank you. And any questions or comments? Go ahead and take the role, Jenny.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes. And then do I have a motion to approve the accounts for the month of December? Followed. Thank you. Page two.
A second.
Second by Sam. Any questions, comments? And we'll go ahead and take the role.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
And do we have any communications through the public?
I did not see them.
Okay. Then we will move on to announcements.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yeah, I do have, have an announcement that I'd like to read off. Next week, January 13th through the 17th of 2020 is Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week in the state of Wisconsin. Wisconsin's adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service by helping ensure the safe passage of our students between home and school. And on behalf of the school district, I'd like to extend a big thank you to our own school crossing guards who serve with dedication while enduring the rigors of harsh weather. That's definitely been the case today with the cold, as well as split shifts and busy traffic conditions. So if I may, I'd like to read off the names of our current crossing guards.
Absolutely.
That work for us here and take care of our kids in the school district of Marshfield. Todd Newman, Dennis Rhodes, Janice Lenz, Peter Mills, Betty Randall, Deborah Scher, Don Gleisner, excuse me, Gleisner, Don Gleisner, Tom Cannon, Steve Christman, Alec Waigner, Teresa Brooks, Tony Wolf, Sue Simon, Sharon Freud, Nancy Hodgson, and Dennis Suko. Again, we'd just like to extend a tremendous thank you to all of you for your work in helping keep our kids safe out on the streets walking to school.
And words of encouragement early in the morning. I have observed many times as these kids are being walked across with wonderful conversations and smiles, and they're just a delightful group.
That's right. And I've seen kids wave to them as they drive. That's why I, yes, I think it's the one.
We often talk of our secretaries and so on in school districts being a point of contact with the public and with the kids. They seem sometimes more than teachers do. Many kids, that's how their day starts off, with that greeting either from the bus driver or from the school district person. So kudos.
Absolutely, thank you.
Then we will move on to, we don't have any district.
No, we don't. I do have a few more items for the superintendent's report if I could move on to those items. And then it's hard to believe we're coming to the midpoint of the school year already, which marks the end of our semester. Along those lines, we did want to take the opportunity to remind our parents that there is no school on Monday, January 20th. While students will be off on January 20th, our teachers will have a record-keeping and professional development workday to coincide with the end of the second quarter, which officially closes on January 21st. And then one last item. In addition, we wanted to take this opportunity to remind parents that we are now in the heart of another Wisconsin winter. So we ask families to stay prepared as, or stay prepared for unexpected early dismissals and potential school closures due to inclement weather. Please take time to review the school closing guidelines that we have posted on the homepage of the district website. And again, another reminder that cancellations, if they occur, will be announced on WDLB, the district's website and social media pages, as well as on channels seven and nine, and of course, our Sky Alert Automated Messaging System. So I, especially in today's day and age, sometimes that text message is the first thing that people get. So that is a part of our Sky Alert Automated System, getting those text messages out as soon as we've made the decision to close if that occurs. And that is it.
At one time, I used to do the recorded versions of the school days. I was a pretty popular guy in town for a while. Hear this for your innocent voice, we go, yeah!
And then we're always blessed with gifts that we don't take them for granted. And this, this month, we have a number of them. For Grant Elementary, winter apparel valued at $150 from the Justin Whitman family, $100 for student lunch accounts and items valued at $100 for the PBIS store from Reese Marshall Arts Academy, reading money for second grade in the amount of $243, and notability iPads for fifth grade in the amount of $600 from the Grant PTO. And then at Washington School, $100 for student lunch accounts and items valued at $100 for the PBIS store from Reese Marshall Arts Academy, $200 for student lunch accounts. Lincoln Elementary, $100 for student lunch accounts and a gift basket for students valued at $30 from Reese Marshall Arts Academy, and then $120 to help cover the cost for second grade, the second grade class to go to a movie, and $200 for the school store and student lunch accounts. And then at Madison Elementary, clothing valued at $50 from Sandy Star Dart, and classroom supplies for Mrs. Hawkeye's classroom valued at $100 from Kay Stevens, and $200 for student needs from Reese's Marshall Arts Academy. And then, in general, $500 for AP scholarships from Mr. and Mrs. Graham Olson through the Marshfield Area Community Foundation, $25 for Pathway Partners from Susan Vick, $30.45 from Houtera Foundation, Inc., $500 for the Gifted and Talented Program from Marshfield Clinic, $100 for Marshfield Middle School Art Supplies from Karen Pfeiffer, and tables valued at $2,500 from the Marshfield Ski Club for the School Forest Lodge Project, and then angel fund donations of $257.50 from Holly Bartels, and $200 from Peggy and Herbert Anders. So what is the board's desire regarding these wonderful gifts?
Except with great thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Second.
And these are just amazing what our community, businesses, parents, and others have contributed, especially in recent years with a number of gifts. And some of these things, some of these programs just wouldn't be possible without these generous donations. So again, when I say except with great thanks, I mean that.
Thank you. And anything else? Take the role, and we'll go ahead and take the role while that comes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
And we will move on to committee reports, employee relations, Mr. Yekitis.
I wasn't available for that meeting, so I'm going to defer to the second-in-command, to Sam Steiner.
Okay. So we met on January 2nd, and amongst our new business, we had one item, which was a proposed maintenance assistance assistant position that would be a full-time position, resulting from the resignation of two half-time positions, actually a point six and a point five position. Nicole Labor, our Director of Human Resources, did some number crunching and made the point that a full-time position would actually be a great cost savings for us in terms of the wages and benefits package. But then also from Ron Stronsky's point of view, having a full-time position as opposed to half-time would offer a much better, efficient flow of work for that, for that time that we have employees to do the work. For example, the project was going to be an eight-hour project. Very likely, there would be a half-time person that would get all the tools together, get it started, but then when their shift is up at 11:00 AM, but the job is not finished, tools get put away, someone else has to come pick up the ball and take over. So it's going to be, it's a very logical position that's going to be both workflow-efficient and also cost-efficient. That will be an action item after we finish with the Employee Relations Committee Report. Then we went into closed session to discuss the 2020, 2021 contract negotiations that will be happening, and we've just begun discussion for that in terms of the base wage negotiations. And we moved back into open session, and we have a future agenda item of employee handbooks that we'll be starting to review again. So I'd like to bring forth the, for approval of the board from the committee, the proposed maintenance assistant position, one FTE.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve a maintenance assistant position as a full-time position. Is there any discussion or other questions? Okay, and we'll go ahead and take the role.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Thanks, Sam.
Then we'll move on to finance committee.
The finance committee tonight, we had a presentation from Mike Drevle on the technology plan. So over the next few school years, where that's going to be taking us and what it's going to look like. He's done a very good job of presenting that tonight. I thought he thought a lot of, I believe it's in our board docs, so if you take a look at it, you can see the plan that he's got laid. Then Ron Stronsky presented the long-range capital outlay plan. Ron always does a wonderful job with this. I always liked how he picks out all those roofs. That's always overlooked a lot of times in a lot of places, but Ron's got a plan that each one of the roofs could check every so many years. And the plan was laid out very well, along with windows in the school in three or four years from now. So please take a look at that in the board docs. Then we have discussion on financing options for the Marshfield Applied Personal Learning Experience in the middle school. There will be quite a bit more to come with that. We looked at different areas where we can get the money to pay for remodeling that area of the school. So we'll be bringing that back. Along with that, we've got, I'm going to be looking for three approvals. One is approval of the tuition and other expenses for the MSETF F1 visa students for 2020, 2021.
So on behalf of the committee, we have a motion to approve the tuition and other expenses for the MSETF F1 visa students for next year, for 2020 to 2021. Any questions? I think you have an attachment that kind of outlines it, that goes up by, or something like that.
Yes.
Then we'll go ahead and take the role.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Then I'll be, I'd like to make a motion to approve of accountable plan for volunteer expense reimbursements for 2020, 2021 act plan, and that's the volunteer expense reimbursement pretty much for the foreign exchange.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve the accountable plan for volunteer expense reimbursements for 2020 to 2021, next school year, in conjunction with the International Student Hosting Program.
Yes.
Any questions, or I think you also have an attachment. Then seeing them, I'll take the role.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman? Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
All right, and then we have a grant for $1,000. It's the acceptance of the AODA Mini Grant Award, and make that motion to approve.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve a $1,000 AODA Mini Grant. And is there any discussion, questions?
Well, other than that this is a grant received, there's no official dollars being expended by the district.
And we'll go ahead and take the role.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Comment, please. As a member of the finance committee, again, the report that Ron gives us and reports that people like Mike give us for IT are records, and that they are proof that this district does do above and beyond maintenance work on our facilities, and it's all record. And sometimes the public has questions regarding maintenance, but this is a district that does a great job maintaining buildings, and that's all, especially tonight, part of Ron's plan that he presented to us. So thank you.
Thank you. And then curriculum and instruction did not meet this month, so we'll move, and facilities, safety, and transportation did not meet, and we'll move on to policy and legislation.
Thank you. So policy and legislation did meet tonight, and it looks like we're going to be here for an hour with all those policies, but we're not, I promise. The policy committee kind of does two things. Sometimes we just get policies that have standard revisions because there's changes to the law, there's clarification to language, and that's the boring part of the policy committee, except through Sam and Karen because they love grammar and wordsmithing, so that's their most exciting meetings. And then we also have abilities, like we did with the cell phone policy last year, to say, is there a problem here? Is our policy working? Is it being enforced? Is it being implemented? And so our meeting today was a little bit of both. I'll bring forward all of our revisions for action tonight, and really, I'll go through those quickly because there's, really, it's wordsmithing. But over the last couple of meetings, every time the board has approved a trip, you'll know, if you go back, at least one board member will say, are we making sure that every child is able to attend these trips if they want to? We want to make sure that we don't have barriers. So the last couple of months, we just mentioned it in passing, and it was put to the policy committee today to talk about that. A, is there a problem? Are kids actually not able to go on these trips? Or are we providing meaningful fundraising opportunities? And what barriers exist for them getting into the activities in the first place? And so we just started that conversation today, and where we left the administration was with a request to do some digging to the folks that actually organized the trips to give us a little bit of insight about, is the fundraising adequate? Is there a barrier that exists for kids? Are there things that we can do better? And is there a policy implication that we need to update our policy? So that is something that will be coming in future months. The other future agenda item that sort of fits into that category as well is that we've asked for an update or discussion on the dress code policy. And that, I feel, is possibly like one of those things in the cell phone policy is, is there, what are the problems? Is there a gender bias with any dress code violations? Is the dress code being enforced in schools consistently? So that is one of the areas that we'll have some discussion and then see, what is the issue? Is there an issue? So that's coming up again, which will be kind of an exciting discussion. Another future agenda item is the payroll authorization 6510. I don't think that's going to be nearly as exciting as talking about the dress code policy, but we'll see. So that's what we talked about today at the policy committee meeting. We do have a lot of policies to bring forward for approval. And if it's okay, I'm going to lump them together by categories that we don't have to go through every policy.
Is that acceptable to everybody?
Oh, okay. So I'm bringing, on behalf of the committee, policy 0142.4, which is O, and 0168.1, Notice of Regular Meeting. So on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the revised policies.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve policies 142.4 and 168.1. Any questions about either of those? And we'll take the role.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
So I'm moving on behalf of the committee to approve the revisions in the 2000 sections, approval of 2260.01, prohibition against discrimination based on disability, approval of policy 2260.02, English language proficiency, approval of policy 2411, school counseling and academic and career planning.
And so we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve three policies, 2260.01, 2260.02, and 2411. Any questions about any of those that were in? Second.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
And I'm going to lump together a policy 3111, creating a position, and 4111, creating a position across two different job categories, on behalf of the committee moving to approve the policy revisions.
So we have the motion to approve 3111 and 4111. Any questions? And we'll take the role.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Also lumping together both policies related to vacancies, policy 3132 and policy 4132, moving on behalf of the committee to approve the policy revisions.
Any questions about policy 3132 or 4132 in the motion on behalf of the committee to approve those? And we'll go ahead and take the role.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
On behalf of the committee, moving to approve policy revisions in the 5000s, policy 30, 5340, excuse me, 5340, student accidents, illness, concussion, and approval of policy 5830, student fundraising.
Any questions about the two policies in 5000s, number 5340 or 5830, that the committee is asking us to approve? Seeing them, I'll take the role.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
On behalf of the committee approving policy revisions in the 7000 category, policies, oh, sorry, 6000, I'm trying to get done. In the 6000, policy 6470, payment of invoices, and policy 6830, audit.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve policies 6470, payment of invoices, and 6830, audit. Any questions? Seeing them, I'll take the role.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
On behalf of the committee, I'm now moving to approve revisions to the 7000 category of policies, policy number 7300, disposition of real property, policy 7310, disposition of personal property, policy 7455, accounting system for fixed assets, and policy 7540.01, technology privacy.
So on behalf of the committee, we have a motion to approve four policies in the 7000s, number 7300, number 7310, number 7455, and number 7540.01. Any questions? And we'll go ahead and take the role.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
And finally, moving on behalf of the committee to approve policies in the 8000 category, policy 8330, student records, and policy 8660, transportation by private vehicle.
We have a motion to approve policy 8330, student records, and policy 8660, transportation by private vehicle. Any questions?
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Hulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And that concludes policy and legislation.
Okay, and I just want to point out for everybody's benefit, it looks like we kind of rushed through that, but we do have all those for us to read ahead of time. And the reason, probably less of discussion, is almost all of this is just some word changes to make the wording further, so.
As well as, this was step two.
Exactly.
And most of the work was covered in step one, and there was nothing that needed to be modified from the work. That was not great yesterday.
Yeah, but we had a very long meeting in November to go through all those and make the changes that we need to make and do our little grammar tweaks and stuff. So rest assured, it's a thorough review.
Miss Yekitis.
And these are all available online. So if the public wants to look at some of this, they can do that. I mean, sure, they want to.
So if you can't sleep tonight?
Yeah.
People put me to sleep.
One more comment, please. Again, I'm delaying, I'm making the board meeting longer than it was anticipated, but when I hear that we're going to be going over the dress code, I'm hoping that we, knowing that we have very conscientious people on that committee, which is sort of a reminder, the dress code issues have been issues throughout many school districts, and there has been a lot of legal issues that have taken place in various school districts, not only statewide but nationally, regarding dress codes. So I'm sure that there will be some additional research done into some of those types of things, if we look at changing our dress code or going into that, because that can really be a hot button issue.
Which is part of the reason why we're doing it.
Yeah. It's good for us to enjoy this proactively. I was impressed by some of the, you know, news stories very close to us, that I think we're really being forward-thinking and proactive as opposed to waiting for a legal issue to arise in which we have to respond to.
It's a bigger issue than maybe it should be, but it is a big issue.
I just wanted to make one final comment. see what we're changing, there's actually, Jenny does this amazing summary document, so you can actually go in and see what was changed, if it was a change to the legal wording or if we just clarified the grammar. So if you are interested tonight and you can't sleep and the melatonin hasn't kicked in, you can pull up that document and see what we've changed with those policies, and you'll see that there's really no change to the actual policy themselves, it's just words or grammar.
You can see the whole form after we begin. Okay, then we're going to move on to new business, and we don't have any retirements that I know of. We don't have any resignations, so we get to move on to approval of employment of new personnel.
As an individual board member, I would like to approve the employment or board on the, excuse me, make a motion as individual board member on the approval of employment of new personnel to include Ruth Elbe, Teacher of Special Education at the High School, replacing Terrence Johnson, Brett Burns, Teacher of Music at the Elementary School, replacing Allison Coonert, Michelle Gertner, I believe, Library and Media Center Assistant at Washington, replacing Brenda Kramer, Kristy Kiefer, Food Service Preparation Cook at the High School, replacing Ellen Danarski, Employment of Hazel Maddox, Food Service Cook at the High School, replacing Linda Schultz, Dottie Weiss, Food Service Server at Washington, replacing Betty Koopman. Now, some of these replacements are people that have resigned in previous months, and we have just now officially filled the positions and so on. That's why you don't see, and some of them are transfers to other positions in the district. That's why we're not seeing any list of resignations of, you know, some of those people. That's happened before. So as an individual board member, I would like to recommend the hiring of that group of new personnel.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Just show me. Second. So, any questions? And we'll go ahead and take the role on approving the employment of these six individuals.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
And so next, we're looking at approval, the Open Enrollment Designation of Spaces per Wisconsin Statute 118.51. So you have something in the agenda items that you could look at for a document, and this is required by statute, that we say how many openings we might have for open enrollment. And do I have a motion to approve that listing of open enrollment designation of spaces? Motion. So moved.
Same.
So we've covered Sam Stein. And any questions about any of those? We'll go ahead and take the role.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Okay, then we have approval of administrator contracts that are up for removal. And do I have a motion?
I have the list of those. Question for you, Ryan, isn't there a state law or something that says that administrators need to be notified by January 30th if they were going to be terminated or something like that, and that's why we got to come forward?
Prior to the end of the month.
Prior to the end of the month. Okay, so recommendation for the approval basically of people that we have now, Jeff Danrow, Nathan Delaney, Mike Drevlo, Mike Nanstad, Melanie, I guess the name now, the marriage is Hammond, Stacy Winkle, Mike Nixick, Pat Sosnum, Tiffany Shear, Jenna Southworth, Ron Stronsky, Sharon Alrich, Kim Ziumbo, Ryan Christensen, Nicole Labor, Gillian Banzer, Jackson Hind, and Kevin Podrowski. That's basically all of our administrative positions except for superintendent.
And it's the ones that are on a cycle to expire.
At the end of this, at the end of this contract here, which would grow each in the 30.
Okay, so.
I'll second him.
Here's a second.
And then just add the clarification, the recommended rate of enrollment is for a two-year contract for the running July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 2022.
Chaney, what he said.
Good.
And the second, please.
Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Then, any questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the role.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.